I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay. First thing is to approve the agenda. If there's any questions, additions, changes.
I'm going to motion that we approve it.
Okay, you got a motion by Sean Ryan to approve the agenda?
Second.
Second by Amy Jurick. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda is, I noticed we have Mike here, is a recognition of outgoing board and commission members. As I said, we had someone at our last meeting, Corey Magnuson, who was leaving the park board, and now we have another gentleman, Mike Schtike, who is also leaving the park board. But I also want to note that Mike is still really heavily involved in the Memorial Park project, so even though he is relinquishing his duties as a commissioner on the park board, he is still heavily involved with the community of New Prague, and we very well appreciate that. I don't know if anyone's been to the park, Memorial Park lately. It's really taking shape, and I've had a lot of people comment that it's, you guys are doing a very great job. So, Mike, I want to thank you so much for your service on the park board. I don't know, how many years did you do it, Mike? Four years? And...
I've tried really hard to convince him to stay.
I know. And I think we could have won if he wasn't doing the baseball thing. I think we could have twisted his arm a little harder, but I definitely understand that. But on behalf of the city, Mike, I want to thank you very much for your service to the park board. And obviously with Amy's comment that you were very well respected on the board, and you know, maybe in a later lifetime, you can come back and serve on some other board and commission because, you know, you've done a great job and definitely an asset to our community. I'd like you to come forward, and we can have Patrick take a picture.
State that New Prague City Council presents to Mike Schtike, a park board member, in recognition and appreciation for the park board and to the city.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody. You're back.
You stand down here.
Hey, we were supposed to have Kurt Jarrett. He didn't, hasn't made it, so maybe he'll make it on the next one, but thanks. So, next on the agenda, we're very fortunate to have Jim Conley here, who is running for the House District Seat 28. Jim, floor is yours.
Good afternoon or good evening. I'm Jim Conley. I guess I know Ken, I don't know if I've met you before, but I know Mike and of course Amy, Mr. Mayor. Sean, I guess I've met you, right?
Yep, we've met.
Of course, the staff over here, and they're, thank you all for your time. I'll just take five minutes. Is that allowable, or is that?
Oh, yes.
Eight or ten, if you guys have questions, or?
We just got to be at the fish fry by 7:30, so.
I'm just kidding. I am just officially here to thank you, first of all, for allowing me a few minutes to introduce myself as a candidate for House District 28. And it's changed so much, I'll just give you the 30-second breakdown on where 28 is nowadays. It, starting from the east, it's New Market Township and the city of New Market, and one tier of towns, can you hear me okay? One tier of townships, meaning Cedar Lake Township, or excuse me, New Market Township, Cedar Lake Township, Helena Township, Bell Plain Township, what did I forget? Blakely, the city of Bell Plain entirety, and of course, the city of New Prague entirety, but not Lanesburg Township. So, it's a tier of townships, all of New Prague, all of Bell Plain, and then it goes south, all of Leaseur, and then there's about five townships. Ottawa, Sharon, Derryane is where I live, kind of out by St. Thomas, all of the city of Leaseur, Cleveland, the city of Cleveland, Cleveland Township, and all, couple other townships, Ottawa Township, and Cosota Township, but not Cosota, and of course, you're not familiar, totally Lake Washington Township, and then all of Lee Center. So, it's kind of boomerang-shaped. It's thin across Southern Scott County, but all of New Prague, and then it kind of thickens out, but all the way to Blakely, and of course, Western. So, it's, it covers the major cities of New Market, Elko, New Prague, Bell Plain, Lee Center, and Leaseur, and Cleveland. Don't let me forget. And a lot of you know me, I'm a resident of this community for a long, long time, not the city of New Prague. Born and raised and went to school here, been very involved with my kids in town here for many years, and did different functions with the school and the city through the years. And somebody asked me why I ran. Well, the twofold answer is, I've thought about it for 25 years. Never was a good time, either my family, my life personally, or situations, or I didn't feel like I represented the district right. Sometimes you'd have Gaylord in Simpley County, or sometimes you'd have Northfield, or maybe almost Mankato, or Waterville, and areas that I really didn't feel like I represented all that well, and parts of it did, and it just never really felt warm and comfortable. And there was a gentleman from Cosota Township named Chris Hansen that was going to file, and he got offered a really good job about the second week in May, and they came to me, some people I've known, and said, Jim, you've always talked about it, you know? And it was way off my radar on May 11th, and I'm, after lots of thinking, looking at the map, I thought, first of all, I didn't have a really good reason not to. My kids are all grown and doing well. I kind of do my own sales thing. I've got a couple of sales things. I'm also on the board of Minnesota Valley Electric for another three years. Got 12 years there. Part of that was as vice chairman. And, but anyway, I, bottom line was, I thought, man, you know, I live right in the heart of this district, you know, and I, I'm, between Bell Plain Rural Fire Board and Lee Center Legion, I'm not a Legion member, I'm a son of American Legion, not to be confused, and Leaseur, I've got a lot of roots there from growing up, and of course, New Prague being my hometown. It just felt like, I think my biggest asset is that I represent, I know, I understand everybody that is part of that district. Not every little body, but I understand the farmers' needs, the small business, the cities' needs. I really think I represent that well. I mean, you've got to, you've got to kind of be one of the people to understand, I think. And I really believe that unless you've walked in the shoes of some of these situations, you know, you really can't do it justice. But, you know, my connections to New Prague, just some of you may or may not know this, but I, thanks to Kay Wilcox, I was asked to be on a volunteer committee back in 82, when we, before we opened up the 1983 community pool. I represented part of the area out there that was really a grassroots thing. There was about 20 of us volunteers, and Jim Holson was kind of the mastermind of the design and the architecture. He used to work out at Genesis Now. There were about 20 really good people, and we went around and raised money, and, just an FYI, maybe you knew this or told this, but we didn't raise enough money to pay off everything, and was it the Rotary that owned Camp Ahuka that time? Pat, Chuck, you might remember.
I can't, I'm not sure who owned it.
The Rotary, I'm pretty sure, owned Camp Ahuka, and they sold Camp Ahuka that time. We had about 30 percent of the debt was due yet. But all that money, up until that point, came from $25, $50, and $100 donations from the school district. I collected money from outside the school district that time, so there was, the city owned the land, and the city donated the land, and the willing to partner agreement, of course, to own it and maintain it. But there was no taxpayer money used for that pool. Kay can verify that, and I just bring that up because, man, 33 years goes pretty fast, but that was an example of, there was really a need, and of course, Kay had put together a bunch of people that had kids and had people that wanted to have an outdoor pool, and so just a little trivia thing on that, that got me involved, of course, with four kids and sports. You can't help but be involved in New Prague. But anyway, the task force committee for the school was, a lot of that was done in here, and right there. And that was an interesting and very educational thing I was involved in there for this $58 million project, but bottom line is, my heart's in this district. My heart's really in New Prague. I understand what local government aid is when you talk about LGA, and I remember when the cities, for a few years, didn't get any, how it affected the cities. First of all, the first thing they cut was equipment, right, Glenn? And the first thing they cut with equipment was, people like me, well, now what, you know? And having been a supplier for 20-some years, and still with cities and counties, you can't plow the snow or sweep the streets with 40-year-old equipment. But not only that, but I understand the economics and the hard work that you guys kind of put in, because I've watched it for years. And there again, I was at the county board meeting in Lee Center this morning, and I could relate to some of the, you know, the states turning over, Highway 112 from Lee Center all the way to Leaseur. Like it or not, the county's got to take that. They're going to get $15 million to rebuild it, but they've inherited an old kind of crappy piece of state highway. So, I guess where I'm going with this is, governments have a lot of mandates, an awful lot of stuff that I've been exposed to, and, and if elected, you'll have a friendly face that you can call. I mean, somebody that's not been given a golden spoon in his life, and not had just a cakewalk in life, I've had a lot of challenges, physically, mentally, family-wise, financially. Some of you know I was a starter and partner, major partner of what was the Classic Will and Bar. And I'll tell you, Renee and I were good friends when we started, and we challenged our friendships through that, but I learned an awful lot about planning and zoning, I learned an awful lot about city government, I learned an awful lot about running a business. And I'll tell every chamber of commerce person tomorrow that I got a huge awakening for the partnership that has to go on between governments and private business. It was challenging, you know? I don't mean that in a negative way, but it was an education that I didn't know a lot about. And so, from that aspect, passion, the experience, you know, I turned 60 last year, so I suppose this, this month, with a little luck, I'll be 61, but I think I've got the energy and the health to, to not blow my brains out at St. Paul when they go on for 10 hours and 12 days and not figure out how to give away, get rid of $700 million for transportation needs or bonding needs. And I don't mean that anything but on a big-picture level, and maybe there's lots that I don't understand, but I can promise you this, that I'm not going to change my values or my way of thinking. I lived out here all my life, and that's who I plan on representing. I'm not waving anybody's flag, I'm waving the District 28 and what Jim Conley feels is best for the districts, so. That's kind of my eight-minute stump.
Well, thank you very much for coming. I want to wish you best of luck, so.
I mean, I still get invited to your pool parties?
Yeah.
I haven't been yet, but I'm working on it. Mr. Guy Rice and I go way back, and Glenn and I, and Ken, you were involved when we were doing the Classic too, I think.
At the very end.
Yeah. That was, I started the groundwork on that in '03. We bought the land summer of '04, opened in June of '05. That was an education.
Questions from anybody? Anyone have a question? No? I guess not, Jim. Thank you very much for your time and coming and...
That's my contact information? That's not a campaign thing, or is that just a name and an email?
They have copies of, I provided them with a copy of the materials that you handed out. They have all that.
Yeah. Yep, we have that on.
Oh, all right. That's on there, then.
Yes. Good luck, Jim.
Going to give you a colored copy, but that's...
Save them. You might need them. Next, Glenn, I guess you're up on the purchase of a dump truck with box and snowplow?
Yep. In front of you, you have prices that we got for, from two different suppliers, for 2017 F-550 chassis, truck and chassis, and then two prices for stainless steel box and for a snowplow. This would be replacing the 2005 F-550, so it'd be the same size of equipment, same, do the same job, everything else. New Prague Ford was a little bit higher than Midway Ford for the chassis. We feel it is a benefit to pay an extra $149 and keep the business local. Nine-foot stainless steel dump box from Chris Steel was the cheaper price of the two, and then nine-foot Western snowplow from Aspen Equipment again was cheaper, for a total of $44,006.97. We had $50,820 in the capital budget for this purchase. Again, we're a little high with that, because they were always telling us that we have to expect quite an increase on these vehicles, and it just didn't happen this year of the vehicles we bought, so that's why there's a little bit of a spread there, but it's staff recommendation to approve the chassis and cab from New Prague, Jeff Belzer's, the stainless steel box from Chris Steel Equipment, and the nine-foot snowplow from Aspen Equipment. Hopefully, if he's got any questions.
I have one. Mike, how come we pay sales tax? I thought there wasn't exempt a couple of years, a year or two ago?
Sales tax on all licensed equipment?
On licensed.
So, if you put a license on a piece of equipment, you got to pay tax on just the chassis? We don't pay tax on the equipment you put on the chassis. So, the box and the plow, you don't pay tax on, but a licensed vehicle, you have to pay tax on. They're talking all the time of changing that, it just hasn't happened yet.
Hasn't, got it.
When they changed the law, the vehicles are in a separate category, and they didn't change that law.
Yeah. Counties and townships, I think, get it tax-free.
Townships, yes.
And they're trying to change that to the cities also, but it hasn't happened yet. So, that's why we pay tax on the chassis.
Thanks. I'll make a motion to accept the Jeff Belzer, oh, is there another, any questions? Sorry, I kind of...
No, go for it.
Okay, got it. We got to get the fish fried. For the Jeff Belzer purchase, and then the crystal equipment, or crystal steel equipment.
And then the Aspen plow.
Oh, and then the plow, too. On, yep.
Yep, correct.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll second.
Second, motion by Janatuma, second by Amy Jurick. Any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Kay passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Next time, don't bring something like that winter equipment in the middle of summer.
I don't like that.
It kind of has a bad connotation out there.
Yeah, I hope you don't have to use it.
Yeah.
Ken, I assume you're going to take this Scott County grant?
So, back in May, city staff was notified from Scott County that they had a grant available for the city, and actually, other businesses within the county too can apply for this money. So, trying to get the word out for that, so they should put a plug in for them as well. But anyway, cities are eligible as well for this recycling and organic collection grant award. Basically, what they're trying to do is increase recycling at governments and businesses within the county, and then also get people starting to do organic food collection, any wasted food, et cetera. Actually, the school district does do that currently. But we don't have really enough organics to be attempting the organic side of collection, even with the kitchen upstairs for the Meals on Wheels, we just don't have enough need for that at this point, so. We're not looking at doing the organics collection, but we do have quite a need for recycling bins. We have been doing recycling at City Hall, for example, we just haven't had, I'll just note, my office area, for example, don't have bins by every desk that were specifically labeled for recycling, that had a nice picture on it, kind of like these types of things, or in our meeting room, or our conference room. And I think it'd be a good thing to get involved, so we had met with Scott County staff, Glenn and I did, and Glenn did all the legwork, running around, seeing what facilities we could use these bins at. So, you can see the spreadsheet attached to the packet, and we've got a request in that was approved, to purchase 57 different recycling bins, varying size and type, another 57 garbage bins, because they encourage them to be purchased at the same time and paid for through the grant as well, so you have a matching set at every desk or at every location out in a hallway, and then they provide the labels for free. Few other bins are being provided for shredding, only at City Hall, because we have basically a shredding service that comes in, and this will allow us to collect those at our desks and bring them to be dumped every day, if need be. But anyway, we did get awarded the grant for $1,385.62. Again, no local match required, and it's all city facility, City Hall to the golf course to the fire station that will, will get the bins, so. We believe this will be a good step towards increased recycling, and would recommend authorization to enter into the grant agreement, which is attached to the second page of the memo.
And then, how is this stuff get picked up? Is it just the normal Lakers?
We already have the bins currently, it's just a matter of, with our cleaning company, let's use City Hall for example, of just having a place where we can actually put the items by our desks or in the hallway, and the cleaning guy can be directed to basically dump them in the large collection bins that are put out for collection.
And we did call Lakers, and then for some of the sites that we didn't have the large collection bins, they'll be supplying them there, like at the pool, at the baseball field, the emergency services building, and a golf course, a couple other places like that that didn't have them. So, again, there's no cost for that. They just bring the bins out, and then they'll come and dump them on a weekly basis. Really no different than what you do at home.
Mm-hmm.
Same bin.
Are these 23-gallon ones, are those the ones that are like on two-wheel? No, they're not the bigger ones?
No. 23-gallons are tall, they call them a Slim Jim, they're kind of a narrow design, and they all have a lid on them where they're out, you know, for the general public, so they can kind of denote, you know, has a kind of a shape to it, so you know, okay, cans can go in there, and then that along with the pitcher should theoretically help people figure out what to put in them. That's been kind of a challenge.
Are any of them outdoors, or are they all interior?
These will all be indoor for now.
We'll have two at the baseball field and one at the swimming pool that will be outdoors. Those will be the only ones outdoors.
But not at parks, I guess.
Gotcha, okay.
Not at parks at this point.
You have one, I think you weren't on the council yet, we do have a trial recycling option up at Memorial Park by the softball shelter, and that's been challenging.
Garbage is a real problem, because if the recycling company comes to pick up the recycling and there is any garbage in there, they will not take it. So, we either spend the time pulling the garbage out, trying to educate the public of, you know, that's why we think these with the covers on there that is just the round openings, somebody's still going to shove some garbage in there, but should hopefully stop it somewhat.
Good start.
So, the ones at the golf course are all inside?
The ones at the golf course will be inside, correct. Except for one, they're going to put a big one outside the west door going to...
The pro shop area?
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I met with Kurt there and kind of talked about where he thought it would be a good idea, and they're going to put one upstairs by the bar, they're going to put a small, a couple of small ones for paper and things like that in their office, so, yeah, kind of just remember to everybody, I talked with the chief in North Memorial, and just kind of put the bug in there and kind of walked them through where you could use this, where it would be a good spot, so.
Good start.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the grant.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Kay passes 4-0. Thanks, Ken. Must be doing the election judges also.
I will, and I do want to apologize, there's an error on here. I referred to June 20th a number of times, should have said July 5th. We were going to have this on last council agenda, and had a few more judges we need to get rounded up, so. Anyway, we're looking today for you to appoint by resolution for election judges for the primary and general election. We're actually required to do this, I think it's July 15th. Amy probably knows actually better than me. But this is the last council meeting we could meet the deadline for the primary. We generally, in the past, have appointed for both the general and primary at the same time. We set the schedule after everybody goes to training. Sometimes people don't show up to training, unfortunately. And we have two options for training through Leaseur County and Scott County for the judges, so we want to make sure we get that notice out to them, and they get to the training.
Is it just one training for both? I mean, they just have to go once?
They just have to go to one two-hour training session for that, for judges that are returning, I should say. We do have an increase in the pay this year. We have to pay at least minimum wage, and that is increasing in August to $9.50 an hour. So, we're looking at increasing the pay from $9.00 an hour to $9.50 an hour. That will include their pay for going to the training, and then as well as serving on a primary and general election day.
Are both the primary and the general election going to be held at St. Wentz?
We are holding those at St. Wentz. If you recall, the council had changed polling place, so just for anybody watching at home, they will be again at the Parish Activity Center. Those residents that live in Leaseur County did already receive the postcard reminder of the change in polling place. Scott County will be mailing those out shortly, we're being told. That hasn't happened yet. But we also have it on our website, we've had it in the last newsletter, and we'll put it in the next August newsletter as well with the polling location, and so hopefully that'll clear up any confusion on that. And just other background information, so Tuesday, July 9th, or Tuesday, August 9th, excuse me, is the primary election, and then the general election on Tuesday, November 8th. And been getting a lot of questions about when the local offices are open, so we do have, obviously, the office of the mayor and two council seats are open, and those filings can occur Tuesday, August 2nd, and can occur two, August 16th, on a Tuesday at 5:00 PM. We're open another half hour late that day for the filings, so. Again, we have that information out, will be going out in the newsletter and on our website, and that's about it. But, yeah, we have two resolutions for your consideration, one for the primary, one for the general, and again, we won't use everybody for the primary, but we do need to get everybody to training, and we'll use every one of the judges at the general election, we expect it to be busy, being a presidential election, and should be a fun day.
So, was your recruitment what you wanted it to be?
It turned out well, in the end, yeah. We ended up using the city website, the newsletter, calling, past judges, and then we used Facebook. That actually got a number of people to sign up as well. The New Prague Happenings Facebook page was used as an advertisement, and that worked quite well.
Did we use that for our boards and commissions?
We did not, but we will probably do that in the future.
Yeah, I guess with the success on this, I would...
That got passed around.
We might have to do, I think, because we got, yeah, we're going to nominate one for park board tonight, but then I think Mike Punchacar is moving out of the city, so then we're still going to be two, so keep that in mind, you know, maybe we should get it out there.
Yep. Yeah, we hadn't done that before, and boy, that got shared, I don't know how many times by everybody in town, so.
Good. Any questions for Ken? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the first resolution for the primary election?
I'll move.
I'll second that. I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Chuck Nicolai, for the resolution of appointing election judges for the 2016 primary election. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. Next, we have a resolution approving the election judge for the general election.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have the motion by Amy Jurick, second by Janatuma. If there's any other questions, all in favor of appointing election judges for the general election, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Mike, I think you're taking this for Patty?
Yes, I've got the audit information, and what you have in front of you is a proposal from Abdo Iken Myers, has been worked out by our finance director, Patty Solhide. You can see the audits comprised, the various components, including the general fund, capital projects, debt service, special revenue, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, ambulance, golf, EDA, and then along with the New Prague utilities, which is the water and the electric. This past year in our 15 audit, this was the first year that we went with one combined audit report, where previously, we'd always had two that were produced prior to that. As part of that process, we were able to get Abdo Iken Myers to reduce their fee by about $7,000 for the 15 audit, and so based on that, they're looking at for the three years for '16, '17, and '18, a 1% increase in '16 and a 3% in '17 and '18, which is shown in their audit proposal attached to Patty's recommendation. And so you can see those fees, a total audit with a single audit, if applicable. Patty has indicated that we've worked with them since 2006, continue to be very pleased with the services we receive from them, and I think our work out of our finance department working with them has improved significantly over the last eight years in the transition process of trying to take on more of the responsibilities internally. So, Patty is recommending that you approve the three-year audit proposal with Abdo Iken Myers for 2016, '17, and '18 at the proposed rates per the attached proposal.
Okay. I can kind of vouch for, I've been on my sixth year here at the city, and I've seen improvement in the audit process every year. I think Patty has done a great job with her staff, doing a lot more of the initial analysis and spreadsheets and things like that, which obviously makes the audit go much more efficient, and so. She was here, I commend her on that, but you can pass that on for me, Mike. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second it. Keep the accountants doing that.
Yeah.
Motion by Amy Jurick, second by Chuck Nicolai. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of approving the three-year proposal to keep Abdo Iken Myers as the accounting firm, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Next. As we all been kind of told, this is probably the last meeting here for a few months, and I think it was staff's recommendation to go back to City Hall rather than, I think this, the school district's going to Falcon Ridge, you said, Mike?
Correct.
And they're going to be doing, I think Mike mentioned today to me, that they're going to be doing just a single camera type of videotaping at Falcon Ridge, and I think my understanding that staff felt it was, you know, rather than switch to another place and that it would make more feasible sense to go back to City Hall, back to chamber, council chambers up there on second floor and utilize that space until the new school district office is open.
I talked to the superintendent, he thinks we should be back in here about the first of the year is what his expectation is so that we can get back and be able to use the video recording technology process again, that we just don't have that equipment at City Hall. They're going to use a one single camera system and indicated that it may not be the best alternative, but they're going to at least try to have that, and so when I asked him when we'd be able to get back in, he said the first of the year. Part of my concern was, was trying to move it to a third location and then come back to here, is you try to get the public to attend these meetings and that, that we just thought as staff it'd be a lot easier bringing them back to a familiar site at City Hall than trying to go to a third new location and try to follow us there. So that's our rationale behind our recommendation.
Okay, any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve going back to council chambers at City Hall for our scheduled meetings.
I got a motion by Sean Ryan. Guess I'll second that. A motion by Sean Ryan, second by Chuck Nicolai to start having our council meetings back at City Hall.
Next meeting July 18th.
Next meeting July 18th, and we will stay there until the new conference, city school district conference room is available to use again, so.
I would like to, can we look into having, it wouldn't be filmed live, but can we look into having it filmed and then showing it at certain times on cable?
Well, that was part of the reason why coming up here is that we didn't have any of that equipment, and I don't know what the cost, the alternatives, and the staffing to do that. We can certainly look at that, but we didn't have that at our hands, which is why we came here in the first place.
I mean, even if it's temporary for rent, I'm just curious how much, if it's possible, I think that would be good for...
Certainly look at the cost and find out what that might be.
Even if we could rent something? Even if, I guess...
And maybe there might be a way, maybe we can talk to the school to see if we can get them to do it for us or something, we'll explore the cost options.
Okay. So I got a motion and a second. There's no other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. And just a footnote on that, that we're going to just have staff look in to see if either school district or if we could rent some equipment to do some single camera videotaping, just basic and...
Part of the challenge of the process is it's not just the camera, it's also the sound system to go with that and to integrate that, and that, you know, the last thing you want to do is to try to videotape it and put it on there, and if people can't hear and it's muffled and it doesn't sound well, you know, we likewise didn't want to do that, so we can explore that, but that was the reason of coming here, that they do have an integrated system here.
Right. And again, that's, you know, just talking to, you know, if Ken just talks to Mitch or their IT people here, you know, Buddy Pint or something, they can probably explain the, you know, the do's and don'ts, so. Thank you. Next, number eight, appointing of the joint powers agreement advisory board. Mike, do you know when the first meeting is scheduled or...
I talked with them, it's my understanding the school's also going to likewise appoint here at their next regular meeting here in July, and I would imagine we get started sometime after that.
Okay.
But no, there's not been a date picked at this point.
Okay. So I don't know if, on the council, I'm not sure who is interested?
I thought I was on it. Am I not on it?
Well, you're a part of the first, or is, that's a joint powers commission, right? Or is that the same, one and the same?
Well, no, that was the question, whether you continued in that capacity, whether we had somebody else that, that's the choice that you as a council have.
Yeah, I mean...
Also, I had to do all the heavy lifting with you two. Would I get kicked off? No, I'm kidding. No, I don't mind doing it, yeah.
No, okay, and I know Amy was interested in it, and, you know, also Amy could represent the park board on that being that she's the council representative, and we could have two council people on the board, it's not a quorum, so that's also another option.
I'd like to discuss it with the park board at our next meeting next week and come back with that representative.
Would that work?
Certainly can.
On the, if we can make a final decision on the 18th, is that plenty of time?
Yep, that should be fine.
So, you know, right now, we're tentatively looking at Sean, and then Amy will talk to the park board. I don't know what everyone's feeling, but I also think the suggestion of Ken being on the board, I agree with that. I think he understands a lot what's going on in the city and things like that, and Mike's already serving in that capacity, so. So why don't we tentatively, next meeting we'll approve it, but tentatively, we've got council liaison is Sean Ryan, and then Amy's going to come back with a representative, either herself or someone else on the park board to represent the park board, and then we'll have Ken representing the city in that capacity.
Do you just table and take final action then on the 18th?
Yep. Any other?
I just had one other question. I know what I feel, but I just want to make sure that the council's in agreement with the park board. I know it's come up that it's possible that someone who's going off the board, who wouldn't live in the city, my opinion is I'd rather have someone in the city because the school will have their representative community-wide, but I just wanted to see what the rest of you.
Your city ordinances require any appointment to any board or commission, be a resident of the city.
Okay, so you've been for this, all right.
Yep. Okay. Okay, so next meeting, we will finalize our three appointments and have that ready to set and go. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we did have a quick interview with Kelly Holden today. She is interested in the park board. She seems well qualified and willing to, as she said, she had her last child married off last Saturday and wants to kind of give back to the community, so I would like to nominate Kelly Holden as the position on the, one of the positions on the park board. I would assume that she would be the four-year term, not replacing Corey or eventually Mike, but actually the new representative.
Taking Mike Stika's place.
Right, taking Mike Stika, I didn't mean Mike Ponchikari, yeah, replacing Mike Stika. So that's my appointment. I just need council's motion and a second and approval.
I'll make a motion to have Kelly on, or your motion, yeah. Was that the first or the second?
That's the first.
That was mine, the first.
Okay, a second. Okay. So all in favor of approving Kelly Holden as the new park board member, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, good. And I assume, Ken, we kind of let her know, but I assume that, I think the next meeting, what she says, Tuesday, that she would get a packet?
Yep, Mary Jo already prepared a letter and we'll get her a welcome packet and a packet for the meeting.
And if you need any signatures, just holler, I can stop by tomorrow or...
Yep.
Okay. Sounds good. Next, consent agenda. Any questions, issues on any items? The consent agenda was even weak too. This wasn't like seven people asking for permanent liquor permits or anything. If there's no other, no questions, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I got a second by Amy Jurick. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Miscellaneous. Jim, do you have anything?
I do not.
How was the fourth?
Fourth?
Yeah, I mean, over the weekend, was it not too bad or?
Not bad at all.
Okay, good.
Rest, a couple drunks.
Okay, good. Glenn?
I've got nothing.
Got nothing, okay. Ken?
Nothing.
Patrick? Okay, and Mary Jo's not here, and I bet you she had a lot today too. She was going to load us down, but, Mike?
If you think I'm going to disrupt the process, you're crazy. I have nothing.
Sean?
Nope.
Ken?
I got one. Glenn, what's the piping over on Settler's Park? There's something trenched in there from the box by the parking lot down around where the soccer fields, the new soccer fields are going to go? Something, there's like, it looks like fiber, you know, the orange.
I honestly don't know the answer to that.
It had something to do with electric, maybe.
It looks like it goes to electric box behind there, but I didn't know if we're getting lights or...
Are they adding something or?
No, I think it's our own guys.
We'll check and let you know.
That's how Bruce Reimer's just pulling stuff.
He's always putting pipes in the ground when I'm telling everybody.
Let's go back with, nothing, I got nothing, let's go.
I will let you know, I will find out.
I was curious what it is, I walked by it, so I was curious.
Amy?
Any word on when the historical society will start in that building, Ken? I walked by there, there's nothing staked anymore or anything.
Marv Deutsch is going to do all the groundwork and everything, and it should be soon. We approved the building and everything, it's all approved and ready to go. It's a matter of when Marv has time to take on it.
We're in miscellaneous.
Can I ask one more question? I got to go back and do over.
She's a do-over.
Glenn, listen, Ken, there's a couple of emails that came from, I think it was the Andersons about Kaye Witt's area?
Yeah.
Back there about being part of the process. Were you able to respond to them to let them know when they were going to be part of the process?
I did, and actually, there was some confusion on their end because Mr. Anderson's wife indicated they didn't want to be involved with one of her emails to me about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago.
Okay.
And then they said they wanted to be, so I think we're leaving it that we're just going to have the discussion at the planning commission.
That's where I thought we were going to go with it? Okay, good, okay.
Yeah, Ken did respond and did a very good job, and Todd even came back and said, oh, I wasn't aware of, you know, a lot of the communication you had with his wife, so.
Okay, just as long as...
We're keeping track of it, yeah, there's been a lot back and forth.
And when is that coming, the next planning commission?
July 27th, that'll be at planning commission.
Okay. And what is going to be brought up at that stage?
At that point, we'll be looking at the replating, so what they were initially going to do is kind of replat everything into big lots and blocks and then do, I'll get real technical, a condominium plat when every unit was built, like they had done on Heritage Village up on Flag and Independence. They would basically submit a new plat, not to us, but to the county where each building was located on a plat map. They decided not to do that due to cost constraints, so they're basically just going to set up a lot with a little building pad for each townhome, which actually works just fine for us, so we'll be reviewing the plat and now lots layout as it relates to the unit map concept that we saw. We'll be looking at that, and then the planning and development, so we can get into the detail of the landscaping issue behind the single-family homes to the townhomes and other details of access and that type of thing, so. I don't actually have the final submittal from for the application, it's due tomorrow, and they said they fully expect to turn it in tomorrow, so I don't exactly know what is all contained in there at this point, so.
Okay.
And have they made any progress on starting back there? I saw moving dirt back there, just like, looks like some fill.
Yeah, they want to get going. Glenn and I and Bruce met with Witt's on the single-family portion. We'll probably have at the July 18th meeting, an amendment to the developers' agreement from back in 2007 to address some Parkland dedication money they owe. They're actually going to pay upfront most likely for that and negotiate maybe something different and see how that goes, and then to talk about phasing and when the roundabout will go in and things like that, but that should be back to you guys on July 18th. Kind of want to break it into four phases overall, so talk about that at that time.
And that's when you talk, making sure that the roads get put in, you know, so that we don't have traffic issues all coming towards Chalupski and...
Yep, exactly.
Okay. David, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
No, I'm sorry for being late. We left Cook 11:15 thinking, oh, we'd make it.
Well, you can still go to the fish fry.
What fish fry?
Fireman's Fish Fry.
Oh.
7:30. I don't have anything, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're out of here. Thank you.